... has gotten the same emails, a couple of emails from the Gant Business Association. They've had four different officers assigned over there in three years. And I'm not about trying to tell the chief of police how to run her business or what have you, but I think there's something about continuity and it may be good reasons for all of this, but there's just been another change. And I just, I think in none of that community but any community unless there's some strategic reason why you gotta move them every, because they get too familiar or something, I don't know, but I've just had a number of people. Have you gotten any of those?
Yeah, and I was gonna bring up the same thing. It's twofold. It's there's no continuity, but more importantly, they're not notifying the neighborhood and that the officer is gone. And, you know, even if we felt it made sense for the policing of these neighborhoods, which I'd be curious to understand the rationale.
Promotions?
The, no, it's not promotions.
It's not promotions?
And it's not because the police person has requested a change. And this is not just in Gant. I'm having the same problems in Park Place. And so I do, I really think, you know, it is crucial for us, I've been working so hard, especially in Park Place, to establish a relationship between the police and their communities, and this is just defies all that sound work. And I really would like to hear an explanation. I agree with Barclay, this isn't our call. That's their call.
There might be a great reason for it.
Right.
It might be that it's just, you know, you learn, you learn a lot about the people, you learn a lot about the people that aren't good, you learn about the people that are good. It seems like by the time they get really settled in, they got, it might be standard operating procedure for the police department. I don't know. I'm not questioning it. I just, it just seemed like four in three years in the Gant Business District, and then you get, you know, you hear about it a lot. The other thing, and we've evidently got a machine up in the registrar's office where you can go in and get on the machine and find out voting lists and who voted and who hadn't voted and what have you in past elections, but it's not accurate. I actually had a call from the press that said I didn't vote in the mayor's election two years ago or the city council election, which I knew I did. We have the voter's list.
Barclay did not vote. I mean, you would've won.
I can't believe you, Barclay. I would've voted for you anyway, Ann.
He couldn't make up his mind, Paul. He just didn't pull the lever.
He voted for me.
Anyway, if it's not accurate, I don't, I think if you go up there and talk to the registrar, I said, "Yeah, we have it, but it's not accurate." We have the accurate list, obviously, when you're running your bottom list or whatever. So I don't know why we have it up there. If people are accessing, and I know the press uses it, and, well, you know, we ought to shut it down if it's not accurate. Maybe it's the law says we have to have it there. Anyway, they acknowledge it, it's a mistake. But can we check on that? That's all I thought.
Who you voted for, damn right, are you?
No, it's not, I didn't vote at all. It doesn't tell you who you vote for. We're good, but not accurate.
Dr. Whibley?
First, thank you very much, especially to Alice Kelly, I don't know if she's here, but for removing the rumble strips. So that was great on Hampton Boulevard. Secondly, I had a concern that a, one of our citizens tried to retrieve crime reports in their neighborhood and went to the police, and they had to produce a freedom of information request for crime reports. I thought that seemed a little strange. And not only did they have to report to the freedom of information request, but the whole thing was lost and, you know, it was certainly not the service we're hoping for.
Was it because the website was down?
No, it was, it was pre, you know, it was off the website because it had been, you know, far enough in the past.
I think we got a, didn't we get an email from the company that had the contract for collecting data on that or was using it last year that we decided to not post that publicly anymore? And even the newspaper, how they reported it, and the compass, they had to change how they were reporting it because they no longer were doing it that way.
I don't know.
Yeah?
But anyhow, so that seemed to be not particularly friendly. And lastly, I hate to be the complainer all the time, but, you know, this move in our meeting up till 4:30, you all may open your schedules on Friday night, but I actually was kind of busy this weekend and picked it up, found out Monday morning. I already had a commitment, I had to change all of that. I understand other people didn't, you know, change it, but I thought it was important to be here at 4:30. And it just, a heads up on that, a little bit advanced planning. You know, there was no reason that we had to wait till Friday to figure out we were meeting at 4:30. I really would like the courtesy of having a heads up or some better advanced planning so, because I had to break an engagement that I had today at 4 o'clock, and it was an important one because I found out then we had to come at 4:30.
I agree. But, I mean, I think the manager determined Thursday morning that...
And you could put in, when Winter says, "The Dropbox is open, it's there, oh, by the way, we've changed our schedule."
But I think what you said earlier, I mean, once the manager, you know, says, "Okay, we're gonna start at 4:30," they ought to make a phone call, not just an email, but a phone call to everybody just to tell them. And I think that's doable. I mean, the clerk's office can get to us and give you a heads up. I mean, they were just, I didn't know, I was with you Thursday, I didn't know how long this waterside presentation is gonna take. You're the one who looked at me several months ago and said, "This is broken because we never got, we never get to everything that's on our agenda."
Yes, I totally...
So I just, all I did was try to get it started.
Yeah, and I, if you would've said, "We gotta meet at 4:00," I'm in favor of it. I'm just asking for a heads up.
Right, and I brought this up in the email, but I just, once again, the city man, we have the clerk's office, which works with us. Tracy, who works with us, she knows how to find Terry and I if she needs to get us something. All you guys have to do is call Tracy and she can get to us in a minute because she knows that we have full-time jobs and that we need to adjust our schedule off of this and we have other things. So just, we have the clerk's office. Don't, it doesn't even need to be Winter or whoever's assigned to that in the city manager's office. Send it to the clerks.
Not allowed to have it.
I know that.
Okay, but how much notice is enough notice? If you send it out on Friday for Tuesday...
It's a lot better than calling Tuesday morning and saying, "By the way..."
Oh, yeah, now, calling Tuesday morning is one thing, but if you send it out on Friday, I mean...
Well, I think it's at least better than last minute. But I agree. I think we could've done it Tuesday, last Tuesday.
Last week I had asked for an update. Unfortunately, I didn't get it from the administration, but I did get it from the community as it relates to whether or not the person who was shot, the feather and fan, died or what happened. Actually, I got an accurate account of what took place and the young man didn't die.
Right.
You know, he's home now. I asked for that information. You know, we talked about this last week and it appears that every week I'm having to come in here and talk about this. Last week, we lost two more young men in the same area, in the Valentine area. You know, my question, when is enough enough? And so, you know, some time ago I had pulled some data and I spent this weekend looking for it. And if you go on the website now, you can't even get this information, which is interesting to me. And so, because I'm puzzled about what is going on in our city. And I was, when I got this information and I started combing through it and looking at it, I was astonished to understand, this is February. This report I got is February. This is the Virginia Crime Trends in February. And I looked at violent crimes out of 39 cities per capita. We went from ninth to sixth. You know, we're the highest, we're number six on the list in terms of violent crimes out of 39 municipalities. We were nine in 2001, 2010, this data just goes up to 2010. And if you look at statistical data now, we're getting, we're not even, but we're still at six. Also, look at Larson, excuse me, property crimes. We went from five to four. So instead of having a methodology where we are working to alleviate crime, it appears that we're, we're working our way to the top of the list in terms of being fourth now as relates to property crimes out of 39 cities. And the one that was really interesting to me is the drug arrests. And, you know, you try to figure out what's going on in these areas, what's the common denominator as it relates to these young men losing their lives in these areas. And, you know, the drug trade is alive and well in this city, but our drug arrests are down. We are 37 out of 39, on this list here, out of 39 municipalities, we are ranked 37. Only two people are behind us in drug arrests. So drug arrests are down in this city. And if we're not making arrests, then it, you know, it kind of speaks to what I'm hearing out in the streets as it relates to a lot of the violence that are taking place are drug-related, but we're not making arrests. And so here we have over seven, eight young men that have lost their lives. And so my question is, you know, are we being reactive to crime? Because we're definitely not being proactive with, to crime. And so my thing, if we understand that there are problematic areas in this city, then, and we know that there are people out here that are selling drugs and we know where they are, we need to be proactive and go and attack those areas where we know the problems exist instead of waiting for something to happen. Because the types of crimes that are happening in homes with people that know each other, we, there's nothing we can do about that. Police can only come after the crime is committed. But if we understand that there's an area or areas within this city, okay, that are prone to these types of problems, then we need to be aggressive in attacking the issue. This is unacceptable. I mean, we, I, you know, in Norfolk, to be 37 out of 39 in drug arrests when we know that there are drug issues within this city. And, you know, I don't want to get on the soapbox there, but the data speaks for itself. It speaks to, you know, what we're, what we're experiencing. And I look at the data and, you know, and I'm not talking about the drug arrests at the bus station with a dog waiting for people to get off the bus. To me, that don't count. I'm talking about real police work. I'm talking about going after these guys, getting the intelligence and going after these guys and meeting them where they are. And I'm concerned about that. And again, we're losing, this is two, three weeks in a row that somebody has lost their life, you know? And I just want to know when the administration is gonna say enough is enough. I'm saying enough is enough, you know? And I, and I do want to get the, like I said, I don't want to wait, all due respect, Mr. Man, I don't want to wait to after the budget to attack this issue. You know, there are things that we can do today to work on this issue. And like I said, I would like to know in that area, you know, that we're having, because I understand that there's been plenty of calls from the Civic League and other people talking about some of the houses that we have in it. So I would like to get a coalition, a coalition together, whether it be Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, Code, Human Cert, the same, Mr. Rogers knows if he's in here, the same group that we took over, over in Fairmark Park, with all of the team players, all of the folk, to better understand what is happening in that area. Because people are very concerned and people shouldn't have to live like that. What else did I have? I mean, I don't, if you guys don't have this report, I'll make a copy of it.
You know, they have the comstat reports as well.
Yes, they do. I'll get with the police. She sevens to be out this week, but I'll get with them.
But there have been 11 homicides in the city so far. I think either five or seven of them have been over by Valentine. So, I mean, that ought to, we ought to have a discussion about that.
Right.
And I do want to talk about, I mean, you know, one of the other issues, and this is not just the main toward three, this is across the city. An inventory of, we did a lot of work in Richmond to, you know, to try to get our arms around these derelict structures. I don't know if we're slipping or if we have the manpower, but I'm seeing more and more boarded up properties throughout our, I mean, and they're not, and I know that the process in terms of boarding these properties up, but I would like to know how aggressive we are in terms of getting these properties on the list and then making the... Right, there you go. And a lot of our thoroughfares, you'll see in these boarded up properties. And to me, that's unacceptable, you know? If we can do nothing else in this city, we can do code enforcement. And I think that's important. So I would like to see, you know, that issue get some attention because I'm seeing, again, not just in my ward, I'm seeing it situational across the city.
What's all that?
The only thing I really have, I was sure that the vice mayor was gonna bring up crime, but it really has gotten to a point where, you know, it's very, very alarming, it's very scary. And to have so many murders occur in such a concentrated area, we really, really need to look at, you know, what is it that's going on that's causing that? Some of it you may not be able to control, but what, to the extent that we can and work with the community and getting, getting good information and acting on it. Because that is one of the complaints that I also hear, is that we tell them, citizens, we watch them sell drugs, we tell the police and nothing happens. And, you know, the length of time that it takes for an investigation, people, citizens are frustrated with it and it shouldn't be happening. So we, I'd like to also get, you know, some information and be included at any of those strategy sessions because we just can't, we can't have this. I mean, we're going into the summer. It's getting warmer, you know? We just, we can't do this. We can't do this anymore.
There's been perception and reality. You know, perception...
Perception is reality.
No, no, perception. You know, there's people that have perception about the city of Norfolk. Then there's the reality. I don't want the perception to be reality as relates to people having, the biggest issue about light rail is not going to Virginia Beach. Most of the people in Virginia Beach, the problem is the crime or the perception that they have about Norfolk and our citizens getting on the train and going to Virginia Beach. Okay? We could call it perception, but when we look at the numbers, it's reality. I want to change that. I want the reality to be that that's not the perception of this city. And unless, and the data proves differently. And so regardless, we could do all the work, we can, we can, and we do a great job in terms of building the infrastructure of this city and taking an old port city and doing great things with it. But if we don't protect this city from a public safety standpoint, then we all lose, regardless of where you live in this city. If people have the perception that this city is not safe, they're not gonna move here, they're not gonna spend their money here, they're not gonna bring their kids here and go to school. So it is important that we get our arms around this issue. It's not a black, it's not a white issue, you know? And so I am not afraid to be out front and say that there is a problem and we need to deal with it, you know? And the reality of that killing young men that look like me in the streets. And so I'm gonna speak to it because it's important that someone speak to it. This is ridiculous and enough is enough and we got to get our arms around it from an administrative standpoint. And whatever we have to do, we have to do it, you know? And I don't care if they go out there and they say, "Well, you're profiling, you're targeting." No, you're not targeting nor you're profiling. This is the reality. And this is the reality that we live in. I'm sorry. Let me...
You're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up was, I read an article in the paper about the rates of homeless female veterans. And I just want to make sure that our Department to End Homelessness and our new Veterans Council takes into consideration the high-rising rates of female homeless and families that are veterans and what their particular needs may be and, you know, how can we assist them in getting back on their feet?
Thanks. I have a little issue with Jasper Street Project Utility, and I'll, I'll just email it to Kristen, and it came up last night at a meeting about the grading of it. But the other one is, I had a Ward Five Advisory Committee meeting last night, and I don't know if it came up in a political debate or something, but, or if it's just a perception, but that Norfolk has not filled all of the codes staff positions still. And I know that we had a presentation over a year ago that said that we, there was some restructuring and that there were eight positions that were open that we were trying to fill. And I don't know where we are with that, but if the public...
We feel so, but there's...
If the public knows about it, I think that everybody here has said that codes is our priority. And it goes kind of along with what Anthony was saying as well. You know, we're not having the murders in Ward Five, but we're having property crime issues. And when, when there's code issues as well, there's a perception that there's problems in the community and they go right along, you know, with each other. And so if we're not filling those positions, if it's an HR issue, then we need to find out what that issue is in HR and make that, those positions get filled. If we're not getting quality candidates, we need to find out why we're not getting quality candidates, what's going on. I don't know because it's been a while since we've asked for that update. But there is a perception in our communities that codes, and they are doing a much better job with tracking. There, I got the presentation and I commend Sherry and what they're doing and John and Frank and what they're doing that, but there is still that perception that we are not filling that staff and so things are not getting done as fast with it. I don't know, maybe...
I'll check, see where we are and see what we can do to boost that up.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
You know, I walked into it with Anthony. In our ward, I can tell you that Saturday over Sunday, my car got broken into at 4:00 AM. My neighbor's car around the corner got broken into between where I am and Ramby Street. I know a city employee's car was, home was broken into, her car stolen. And just a little bit further east of her, there was another break-in. And it was all ironic, it was Saturday over Sunday, Easter Sunday morning. That's the type of crime that appears to be something that would be organized. It wasn't just a few people, it was organized. And I think that perhaps when Anthony does get his numbers that he's talking about in the request that he has, something we may want to look is, is actually look into PD, look into, and deep into it, not just the leadership issue because we're in an interim chief, I understand that, but look into what we're, vis-à-vis the other cities. What we're paying overtime is a significant issue. We need to see where we go with that once again. Because I do believe in my heart of hearts and being around the courts, that's an issue that you will hear time and time again. Anthony and frankly, I can tell you the traffic court dockets have dropped tremendously. And keeping in mind that when arrests aren't made, we lose judges. I hate to say it that way, but it's true. We lose the, the system of justice begins to fall apart. So we really need to look at our numbers and really what's going on with that. So I would say it really needs to be something, and I'd like to be part of that if we meet just from being on the inside on those issues. I think that it may be back to community policing, where are we with that? And things that we can do. So we do need to take care of that. I have another issue, and Bernard, this matters in litigation. It's a workers' comp case. But it is something that I think we need to look at again, and also, I want to say real quick, vis-à-vis our numbers, whether or not our population is such that we need to increase the force or not. I think we need to look at that. I think we've had that before. That was a couple of years ago. That should be part of all that.
Per capita, per square mile.
Yeah, we need to look at that, all of that once again. And I think that we also need to look at our relationships with Old Dominion PD and Naval Base PD and look at our relationships with them. I know that there's certain issues that we have to police on, on some of the concurrent jurisdictions. Let me, and also, this is the other issue, and I'll give this to you, Ann, or to Marcus, whoever's gonna sit there in the next 10 seconds. This deals with a matter, it's currently litigation. Again, it involves police, but it is something, it's a sensitive issue. And I'm not a comp lawyer, but it does, it was mailed to me to look at. It's where officers have denied accidental retirement disability benefits after remaining on the force for years while still suffering from the effects of the original injuries. I don't know what the comp law is on that. And I understand that, you know, if that be the case, then the law is the law in Virginia. But if it's, if it's a city policy, it's something we need to examine. Because I know that we have officers who remain, maybe injured and they remain on for years to get their retirement as maxed out as possible, whatever it is, and then end up in a position where they are not being able to receive the benefits that, because the injury was, let's say, 10 or 15 years earlier. I'm curious if it's a policy that we have or it's a comp policy. And I'm gonna give you the letter I got from an attorney on that. Also, there's been, and I don't know if it was, if it was rectified or not, I know that there was a, police officers, that has been, and emails back and forth, Bernard. And I need to be educated on that particular issue unless it's been fixed involving his retirement and the date letter. I think there was a request to meet with the mayor. Did they square that? Was that squared away ultimately?
That is squared away, that...
To his satisfaction?
Well, he got what he wanted from us, but it didn't cause him to achieve the benefit from the federal government that he had hoped for. So that he got what he wanted from us, so he's satisfied there, but he would like to be getting more money from the federal government. So I can't tell you that he's now a happy person, but he got from us what he has.
But I think that we needed to do everything we could to make sure that he could get the benefits he could get. And I know that he was gonna meet with you, Paul, and I saw that it came off, but I wanted to make sure I followed up on that.
That's done.
And there's nothing else that we can do to help him out and that's...
No, I don't think so. It's a federal provision.
I actually saw him in the Civic League.
Okay.
I think he's satisfied that we did. We didn't get there quite as fast as maybe we could've gotten there.
And the delay was associated with our administrator's opinion...
Right.
That what he was seeking, he wasn't entitled to. They were concerned that they would misrepresent something that would cost them to have participated in getting a benefit that he wasn't entitled to.
I understand.
So he got from us what he requested and the federal government told him what we were telling him, which is, "You're not entitled to receive that." So I think that's closed now.
Well, what's interesting is, and I will tell you that, I walked into the courthouse and ran into two retired officers who were blue coats there. And they thanked me for the letter that they received that assisted them to get what they needed to get. And I said, "Well, you all must have gotten it because I know somebody who didn't." And I guess I'll talk to him and I'll talk to Barker, go offline on that.
And you'll, let me know if you need something else, but I think you got everything you wanted.
And that's all I had. I think that I had sent a budget memorandum in. I thought that was the easiest way to do things. And I asked that everybody get a copy of it. That may help in case it overlaps and we can work together on that.
I thought you had a great idea, so I did the same thing.
It just makes it easy. That way you're not chasing...
I know, well, shoot, he's putting one out, I'll put one.
It just made it comfortable for me.
You didn't meet with him? Everybody else met?
No, I don't have time to meet with him like that. It's easier to send the memo in. And so, and there's issues on there that perhaps policy issues that push the budget. And I think that those are things that we need to look at. And as we get to the budget discussions, then those policy issues are things that we need to, to really begin to examine as a city as a whole. That's all I had. I think I pushed my stuff through during the week. Thanks.
I just want to talk for a second about the budget schedule. We're gonna have, the manager's gonna present the budget on...
The 24th.
24th. We will have a public hearing on the first...
Second.
May 2nd, that's right. And then on May 8th, we're gonna have our budget discussion in here. May 15th, we were scheduled to vote on it. And I can't be here on the 15th. Yeah, so, May 22nd is the next meeting. I mean, I literally, I mean, I haven't missed a budget vote in a quarter of a century, but I've gotta be out of town, you know?
I'll come for you.
I think you're probably just trying to stay here.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm working on.
That would be an interesting number to do, council members now.
Works for me.
Let's get all the way to schools.
So, if we vote on the 20, if we schedule a vote on the 22nd, if we somehow get hung up on the 22nd, we can fall back to the 29th and still be, have our budget passed before the end of May, which is what we're required to do, so...
So we will go back to having no meeting on the 15th like we normally do? Because that's the third teaching?
Can we just get a memo? Should we go and get it in our little...
Yeah, but if...
What if we never had a meeting on the 3rd? I know that wasn't scheduled, but we've always had something on the 3rd, Tuesday.
No, we were off when we first started this.
Okay, we'll get you the memo, that's right, with all the dates on it, okay? Okay, we'll, we'll get you the memo, that's right, with, with all the dates on it, okay?
All right, Mr. Manager. Okay. That's it, I'll turn it over to Ron Williams for the first item on the agenda.
While he's doing that, can I pass these out for my wife from the garden club real quick? Those are tickets. If I don't do it now, she's going to see me tonight and I will mess it up.
Okay. We don't want to mess.
I don't want to mess up. Yeah, I can, I can mess up with you, but I cannot mess up with her. These are vouchers, I think, for you to go.
Go ahead, Ron.
The purpose of this presentation is to follow up on a presentation that was given two weeks ago at council committee. We did have it scheduled last week and ran out of time. Before we get into the presentation that basically provides you with an overview about the proposed coal-fired plant in Surrey and the potential impacts on Norfolk's environment and its water system, we want, we did want to bring your attention that, per the request of the, the committee two weeks ago in discussion last week, we do have draft resolutions for consideration by council that we would recommend be scheduled for public input at your April 24th meeting. Basically there, and Breck has copies of the, of the, of the resolutions. The idea being that, number one, one is, would take a position of opposition of a policy matter, or secondly, the, a resolution that would express the, the concerns about the proposal and give a plan of action for how to address that through the regulatory process. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Denise that will walk through. For those that weren't at the present at the committee, this is a condensed version of what we did a few weeks ago, but does touch on the finer points of the issues concerned about this proposed plan.
Ron, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, Ron's laid out the purpose of the presentation very well, and I'll work with you briefly on the presentation that we had given to the health, families educate, and families committee earlier this month. As you know, coal has been a main source of energy for our country and, and for the globe for years and years and years. The proposed plant in Surrey County will use coal, Appalachian bituminous coal and biomass, which is basically wood. So it will use both of those, the proposal is to use both of those fuels as the fuel source to generate electricity. A little bit of background on the company that is proposing to build the plant. The company is a wholesale power supplier to 11 locally owned electric cooperatives, and the cooperatives serve a little more than half a million homes in the Delmarva Peninsula area, so Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, and just a little bit of West Virginia. Old Dominion Electric Cooperative is pursuing plans for, as you've probably heard, a 1,500 megawatt, $6 billion coal-fired fire power plant about 60 miles west of Norfolk. The state now has, just has 55 operating coal plants and, at 21 locations in Virginia, to give you a little bit of perspective in terms of the, of the size of this plant. It would be built on 1,600 acres near Dendrum and Surrey County. And the combustion byproduct of coal burning, which is fly ash, would be stored in a lined landfill, which is located in the Blackwater River floodplain. And you'll hear a little bit more about that later in the presentation. A little bit about coal ash storage, it is a byproduct of combustion of coal. And in, coal ash can be, has beneficial uses. It also can be disposed of in liquid form or in solid form at landfills. It has been in the news, as you probably have heard, in, in our area and across the country. And the Environmental Protection Agency now is working on regulations for the disposal of coal fly ash because they've had some issues with health problems and environmental problems. And the, the regulations are now under review by EPA. This is a map of the location. You can see, I think, that doesn't show up very well. At your place, it's, it's going to be easier to see where Dendrum is, and then roads, and then Dendrum is basically northwest of Williamsburg. We've got three maps for you to give you a sense of where the plant fits in terms of environmental emissions and discharge. Among large coal-fired power plants in Virginia, this one, which is, you can see in, in the second line, in terms of size would be the largest. In terms of a regional source of nitrous oxides, which is a precursor of smog, it would be the third largest, although presently plans call for taking the Yorktown Power Plant and the Dominion Power Plant offline. And possibly converting the Yorktown Plant to coal. And like other coal plants, it would be a source, it would certainly meet all regulatory required, regulatory requirements of state and federal governments and would be a source of mercury emissions. So there are some pros and cons, as with most projects, to this one. The power plant will provide needed electricity. It provides electricity at a good price. Coal is relatively, compared to some of, of the other ways of generating electricity, inexpensive. And it provides good jobs and tax revenue, so, both at the site and associated with coal mining and transportation. It would help meet an increasing demand for electricity, as I said, and create well-paying jobs. Presently, it's difficult to generate this volume of electricity from wind and solar, and electricity from coal is, is generally affordable. On the con side, opponents of the project are concerned about downwind mercury and lead emissions, about the potential for nitrous oxides forming smog, issues with ash disposal, and in terms of the big picture, the possibility of having a conventional system possibly puts off the point at which alternative energy sources such as wind and solar could become You've probably heard of, of non-attainment area for ozone. We are presently within a ozone maintenance area, so we do, are, we are below the discharge level for ozone or the, the action level for ozone, although some of the proponents of the plant have said that the project would possibly interfere with this. We've also looked at, in addition to air, air emissions, we've looked at possible effects of water and our regional water supply. And as you know, Norfolk is the regional water supplier for a number of localities in the area. And there's a possibility, and we'll be doing some more study on this with the, our utilities department, there's a possibility of migration of the fly ash from the lined landfill in the Blackwater River floodplain. And, and potentially impacts from stack emissions near the reservoir and the reservoir watersheds. This is a, a good background map that shows you where the Notaway River watershed is, the Blackwater River watershed. And Surrey County includes part of the Blackwater River watershed, and Dendrum is just, just below the Surrey County line or the watershed outline. So Hampton, so in terms of Hampton Roads' response to this project, the project, as you probably know, has been controversial. The Town of Dendrum, Surrey County Board of Supervisors and the Sussex County Board have all approved the project, in fact, twice. In 2010, they've approved the conditional use permits and the zoning for the project, affirmed it in 2012. The Isle of Wight County Supervisor, Board of Supervisors, however, on a couple of split votes, have opposed the project on a three to one vote in 2011 and a three to two vote in 2012, just recently in February, or, I'm sorry, earlier this year, in January. Southampton County Board of Supervisors voted five to three to oppose the project a month or so ago. Virginia Beach has been monitoring the issue and so has the city of Williamsburg. Williamsburg has notified the Corps of Engineers and the Department of Environmental Quality that they're concerned about the project and that they will be reviewing closely the review process, which as you'll see in a few minutes on an, or shortly on another slide, is extensive. The, we mentioned the regulatory process locally, just briefly, and those approvals have been, for the, for the most part, have been met. In terms of the regulatory process for state and federal, there are extensive permits required. There are air permits, prevention of significant deterioration permits, the max, the maximum achievable control technology permits. The plant will require discharge permits for wastewater, for storm water. They'll need a solid waste permit for the landfill. They'll need a water withdrawal permit to take water from the James River. And then fish and wildlife and cultural and historic resources permits. And with all of these permits, there's a specific process in terms of when conservation interests, as well as local governments, as well as residents and citizens can weigh in on the projects. So with that, we're.
Mayor and council, I'd just clarify one point. You received a letter from me yesterday that had two resolutions. One that was opposing, which was at the end of our last work session. Another was a, a resolution that would suggest that the council would direct me to do several things, including doing the water study ourselves. So as Ron mentioned, the, you know, the 24th, that's something that you will decide, whether or not, that's something that you discuss, you know, tonight or whether you discuss in two weeks. So I just wanted to clarify that the letter that I sent yesterday was up in response to the last work session that you had.
Let me weigh in here, and I appreciate that, Marcus. For whatever reason, this matter did not make it to the published agenda. It's a matter of some significance. There is some, I know the council members have some strong feelings about this. As a matter of due process or just fair play, that if there are people in the community who would like to be heard on this matter and do not know that we are considering it, they need a, they need an opportunity to be heard, whether it's a corporate citizen or whether it's a citizen. We have worked hard to create trust with the community and the sense of transparency. We have taken a hard stance against walking matters on. To the best of my knowledge, no member of the public even knows what this resolution, how it reads. Two weeks with these, with this extended review process shouldn't have, shouldn't cause anybody, other than those who really want to get on with this thing. It shouldn't, shouldn't cause the project or our position any difficulty. I mean, so I just, I would hope and I would expect that the council would agree to have this matter put on the agenda for the 24th. We know that at least one of our corporate citizens has written to us today and would like the opportunity to see the resolution and to comment on it before we vote on it. So the manager's, well, has made his comments and that's, I just think it's a question of due process. We do not want to bring something like this on the docket for us to vote on with the public not being at the table, so we can hear what they want to say.
Well, I obviously am one of the ones that is in opposition to the delay that this has taken. And I think it, it just is a frustration that this, I brought this up over a year ago, and I just feel like we've been dragging our feet on this. And I felt like we walked out of last Tuesday with a plan. This was not brand new. People had heard about it. It had been on our agenda on last Tuesday and what, two weeks prior to that. We walked out Tuesday with a plan. And then, and we didn't plan for two resolutions. We planned for one, voted up or down. Somehow that changed. And all of us talked about that there was a sense of urgency, that I think there's some other projects coming along and meetings, and it was important for us to get on the, on the record as being in opposition. I think we've all heard from our citizens, they all know about it. So it's not like it hasn't been out there, because God knows, I've gotten 300 emails, signatures. I, I support you, Paul, in the idea that you want to give everybody a place at the table and you want everybody to be able to talk. I guess, I was very frustrated that this was not on our agenda already. And I'm, I'm concerned as to how that happened.
And I'm, I'm as well concerned that now there's a second resolution that is being proposed as almost giving us an option when we didn't discuss voting up or down on this.
Yeah, and we, we thought said it, and we all said around the table.
And I'm sorry that there's council members, not everybody was here, but the majority of council that was here said that we were going to give Anthony the opportunity to see the presentation today, but that we were in agreement that there would be a resolution regardless of the presentation, because everybody else had seen that presentation coming into the committee meeting early. And, and, and so it was no point of trying to just reinvent the wheel when most of us have made up our mind on where we need to go with this. And, you know, delaying it two weeks is not going to change anything. In fact, I think that we're going to see a very long meeting that night because it has already gotten out there why this is being delayed. And there will be more people coming out to respond that we vote in favor of this resolution because of why it's being delayed. We're going to be, that's going to be a long meeting. And I understand we have a good corporate citizen that has concerns that this has not been put out publicly, but that same corporate citizen has been at meetings where this has been discussed and has never come and brought to our attention their side of it. We, this, it was on the agenda last week, which is public. It was on the agenda for the committee meeting, which was public. There was opportunity for anybody to come to those meetings and voice their concerns to us individually or through email. And we asked for this, and I just think that it would, it, it makes sense for us to just move this forward and vote on this resolution tonight.
Well, you know, I can speak for me. Like I said, I mean, last week, we had people that had to leave, and so I couldn't get the presentation last week. And, and, and for me, it's just matter of principle. I've been, again, we've always allowed folk to have their say or have their day within the process. Everybody has a seat or a voice in the public square. And I do think that, yes, we do have a lot of people in opposition to this. And nobody's trying to change anybody's mind around this table. But at the end of the day, I do think others should be able to have the opportunity to express their position. If this was another issue and we, a group of us got together and said that, you know, you're not going to be heard and this is the posture that we're taking and we need to vote this thing up to today rather than tomorrow, folk would have a fit. And so we've always talked about consistency and fairness at this table. So again, nobody's trying to change anybody's mind. I don't think that two weeks, I could be wrong, but I don't think that two weeks is going to make a difference in terms of anybody's position around the table, but it does allow for folk to, to have their say. So you can just say you did have a fair and equitable process at the end of the day.
Can I ask, when was the resolution, when was the resolution prepared?
Yesterday.
I mean, how would you know, Tommy, what was in a resolution that hadn't been prepared till last night?
Well, it was really the issue that we set on Tuesday. We want a resolution opposing this, which is not, it's not particularly complicated.
Who said that?
We all did. We all sat here, and when you walked out, you said, I've got to go, but I support you with that resolution. Now you did.
Okay.
And, and, because I was shocked.
I think I said something like whatever you want to do.
But anyway, so that was all it was. And so, and we had the promise, and Anthony said, I agree, we'll move ahead on this, but just let, let me have the ability to see the presentation again, otherwise we were going to sit here and watch it.
But the resolution, the public has not even seen. But anyway, that's, I mean, I've, I've suggested, just had a question of due process.
I think we're caught in a rock and hard place, just because it didn't get put on the docket. We did agree that it would be put on the docket, but it didn't get put on the docket. It says it didn't get put on the docket and we have this, we have to have two weeks to review something.
This is an ordinance, this is a zone. Do we have to have a public hearing? Do we have to have a public hearing for a resolution? Is there any legal precedent for that?
But, and I understand...
I mean, we have to vote on it, so it's going to be an item on the docket, so people will have the opportunity to make public comment.
But I've had, but I've heard two council members, three...
Rocking a hard place.
I've heard three council members so far say that we have a policy about not walking things on, and since we talked about that policy of two weeks, we have walked on items on the agenda and voted on them. Whether it's an appointment to a board or, or something else, we have done that. We did it with the Nor, the railroad tracks when we had to do it that night. We added that on. And so, you could say that we, I mean, we don't walk on things, but we have done it. And if you're telling me that that's the policy, then from here on out, then there should not be any walk-ons at all for the rest of the time that any of us who are sitting at this table are on this council.
I haven't walked anything on down.
I didn't say us. I said, things have walked on, and we have agreed as a council that it was okay to do that because of a sense of urgency. And there is a sense of urgency with this. It should have been done months ago, and if, if, if staff at those meetings, when we brought that up over a year ago, same thing with uranium, we wouldn't be in this situation now. We've been asking for this presentation for a long time, Paul.
Well, I mean, you know, I, I hear that, but I...
We tried to get it done before Dendron re-voted on it.
But we act as a body here, we don't act through committee. You know, I mean...
But that's, but our job is to set policy, Paul. Paul, our job is to set policy and to recommend policy and then vote on it. And the, the structure that we have come up with in this council is to do it through committee, unless somebody has an individual thing that they come up with and they want to present it that way, but it gets vetted through a committee.
It gets vetted, for sure.
This committee has made this recommendation with the agreement of the majority of council who were here at the informal session last. There were six of us here, which is well more than a majority.
And for whatever reason, this two-week delay has been called the Wibbly Rule, because I said, "We've got to have this two-week delay." Okay, I'll, I'll own that. And you all sat here and said, "Would you agree to let the Wibbly Rule be, be forgiven for this particular situation?"
I was not in the room at that time.
Well, that isn't our fault.
Well, wait a minute, I'm the Secretary of State here, so, you know, I mean, you're going to have to get up and go when she was due here at 5:00. Wait a minute, Andy, you want to...
Yeah, I had two, two issues. One, and, and I, I'm just curious, because when somebody tells me something, time is of the essence, and what I do for a living, it, it, something, that means something will occur that will be detrimental to a position that we may take if we wait. This being, and I'm just asking, when we use that, is there something that will occur in the two weeks if we don't take a position, except for the fact that another city may take a position before us, and then it's a mere political matter that we just look like we may have been slightly slower?
Which Virginia Beach apparently is.
I understand. But it, I mean, is any, is there a permit that's coming up that we need to send a letter on, that we need to keep this from happening? That's what I'm curious about. And that's what I'm saying is, when we talk about times of the essence, and I'm only saying this to be, to be absolutely, to understand this, is anything occurring in the next two weeks, if we were to vote in two weeks, on this plant that we know of, that will be detrimental to us if we don't, if we, if we wait to take a position that appears that, even though at first glance, the majority of council would seem to, to agree with? And lastly, I will say this, and I understand Norfolk Southern has their corporate headquarters here, and whatever their positions have been, if they haven't monitored it through us, or whatever it may be, I still think that when, when the chairman of Norfolk Southern takes, asks us to consider, to wait as long as it's not a time is of the essence issue, that is something that I do believe as a, as a body for this city, we must strongly weigh and strongly consider. Not to say that we would support his position, but I do believe that a personal letter from, as we would any civic league, whether we agree or disagree with them, be as may, he has asked that they be able to at least give, I have not heard the other side of this. My preference would be to hear what the other side is, whether I agree or disagree with it, I haven't heard it. I would be acting in a vacuum. Unless you all were heard...
So you, you want Norfolk Southern to come in here and do a presentation before council? Or are you just waiting for them to draft a letter to us? They could have done that today. They could have done it yesterday. And if we're going to allow them to do it, then the Chesapeake Bay Foundation needs to come in and do the same thing.
And I understand, but how many times, Tommy, have we sat, and I don't want to argue with you, but how many times have we sat and we've been on the dais, and we had somebody come up and say, "This civic league didn't know about this particular issue or this vote." We said, "Okay, please go back and come back in two weeks and meet and talk to the developer, and then come back, and we'll deal with it at that time." And we've done that, and we're ready to pull the trigger. So, I mean, I get that, but I also think that whatever Norfolk Southern is planning on doing, whether it was Norfolk Southern, whether it was Centerra, it is something I do think that I would like to hear what they can say that would be, other than saying that it's going to be, they're going to have, I assume, filters that will clean the stuff out. Other than that, I can't imagine what else they're going to say. And it may be fun if they come to cross-examine some hot power lawyers.
They see, if they look at it, they may decide not to.
Be sport.
They may, they may send one representative to speak. It's not Norfolk Southern's style to come in here and try to...
They may just send a letter and give us the presentation as to what the other side is. But I think in fairness, if you all haven't heard the other side, and I'm just saying just to be fair all the way around...
I thought Denise's presentation was fair and balanced. She presented both sides of it. With the data that has been presented, it couldn't have been any fairer.
I share the frustrations, because we were here and we agreed it was coming. For whatever reason, it didn't. I don't know why it's been produced today. I tend to agree, and I'm opposed to it, okay? And I don't think anybody's going to tell me anything that's going to change my mind on that. But when one of our leading corporate citizens asks for, for two weeks, nothing's going to happen. I, I don't think, no matter what anybody does, this is going to happen if the regulations that I know about or think I know about are in place. I don't think it's ever going to happen. But I think we have to take a position on it. I think everybody knows how most of us feel. And I don't know that, you know, and I understand everybody's argument here, but I, you know, a corporate citizen asks for their, their two weeks, and I don't see any, there are no permits, there's nothing, other, the only thing is maybe Virginia Beach could get out of the chute in front of us. If it's a problem, it's not to me. I think people understand how we feel, and, and to give them two weeks, I don't see how we, I agree, we're filling up the docket if we're going to go waterside and a number of other things in two weeks, so I, I don't know whether we have to have a special meeting if they want to talk, maybe they don't, I don't know. But I, you know, I, I have, as I say, I'm stronger, feel strongly as any of you do about it, but I do lean towards letting them, you know, have a couple of weeks and come back, and nothing's going to change in my mind, but, you know, they certainly... And why change our own principles? I mean, we have our principles.
Well, our principles are that we have a city staff that works for city council. A directive was given last Tuesday, and somebody was allowed to infiltrate our system and make sure that that was not on the agenda that caused the delay. Call it a conspiracy theory, Andy, but that is what happened. There was a directive, and if you want to pull up the tape and watch it on TV in our open and transparent government, then pull it up there and watch us all sit around this table and say that that was supposed to be a resolution, and that it was, it was important that we got that voted on, because it was originally suggested to move this to the 24th. And I, there are some environmental permit discussions coming up, and I think as soon as Norfolk takes the lead in this, that there will be other cities that will feel comfortable now in taking the lead, or going along with our lead and opposing this. Okay, the estimated cost of this is $200 million in healthcare costs over 60 years, okay? The EVMS Center is opposed to this, the Consortium for Children and Asthma is opposed to this. There has been studies done, we don't need to study it anymore. It has said exactly, we are downwind from this, we are going to have effects from this smog, from this. Why are we going to sit here and wait on this? I don't understand that the staff messed up on this. If, and if staff did not mess up on it, then I want to know how it did not end up on the agenda. Okay? Why did not end up on the agenda?
I'd like to address that.
I mean, it is, it is, it is ridiculous that we're going through this again, Marcus. I'm sorry, but this would not have happened if staff had followed through with what they were supposed to with the directive from city council. We wouldn't have a letter from Norfolk Southern asking us to delay this.
I'm also curious if you would also address why we have two resolutions.
Yeah, I'll start off with what happened. I had key staff out at the end of last week, and we didn't get it drafted. I had a message sent to me on Saturday, and I said that we'll have this to you before Tuesday, before Tuesday's council meeting. If I thought it had gotten, would have been an issue like this, we may have used who we had on the bench that day to get something together. We just didn't have the key people who have been shepherding this through at the end of the week to put together something that I thought was reflective of what the council wanted. Secondly, if you go back to the presentations, the administration hadn't taken a, a position. And I understand clearly, the council members that were here that Tuesday said, "Do this in opposition." All along, the administration had not taken a position, as a matter of fact, at the end of the, the work session, I mentioned that. So what we did was tried to do something that was similar to the presentation that was made, which was just, there are some other opportunities, and that's all we did. We provided that, that secondary resolution. But clearly, we didn't have the staff at, on, here at the end of last week, and I, at that time, was uncomfortable giving you something that I wouldn't have somebody vetted.
You know, I don't know what, Tommy, this happened or didn't happen, but Monday morning, I got a, I was minding my own business in my office, in my office, when I got a phone call from Norfolk Southern that says, "We understand that there had been some discussion about a resolution." That was the first they'd heard of it, and, you know, at least they'd gotten up to the, to the point where people, you know, would call us about it. And I said, "Well, I think it's on the agenda." And I pulled up the agenda, it was not there, or was a resolution. But in, in fairness to them, I mean, they have an opportunity, they should be afforded the opportunity, be heard, at least look at the resolution, as should any, any other member of the public. So, I think there are five of us who feel that this matter ought to go on the docket, at least five of us on the 24th.
All right. So who, who called Norfolk Southern and told them that there was a resolution on it for them to make a phone call to you on Monday?
I have no idea.
I got a phone call too, so it wasn't all of us got a phone call.
If you got, if you want to accuse somebody, accuse somebody, Tommy.
I'm not accusing you, Paul. I'm not accusing you. I'm just saying that it's amazing what the corporate world does, and I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. You know, they, they, it, ODEC does not want us to pass this resolution because they know what it could do, and they will find their ways to make sure that this doesn't happen. And it will be amazing to see what happens in two weeks with the delay.
Well, let's see, then, where do we, what do we learn from this? I mean, I'm always thinking that, okay, we made a mistake here. I mean, I think we ought to go forward with recognizing what went wrong, and I think we all could learn from that. And one is that if Mr. Burford hasn't heard a presentation, we'll sit here and tell him he hears it. But I really do think maybe we ought to end up a meeting and say, "Okay, what are we, what are we doing here? What can we expect?" And so, you know, we don't have this mis, mis, mis...
And I think we ought to take a little time to review our committee structure, what we think...
Yeah, I do, too.
You know, the committees have the authority to do or not do. I mean, there are things coming through the, the committee that, you know, through all of these committees, that, that, that some of us are not aware of.
This was discussing the whole council. You had to go, I know, because of Hillary Clinton, we got carried, you know, we got, but that went further.
But it was brought to council.
It was brought, liking you, Paul, it was brought to...
And the original times they were brought up, that we asked for, for us to look at it, was brought at council, not at a committee.
Can I ask you a question, because I, you know, I'm not a part of that committee? So was everybody at that committee meeting? I missed that committee meeting, I'm just wondering.
We were not on every committee.
I know that. I'm saying, because I...
We talked that at the council meeting last week.
Right, but people had saw the presentation, I had not seen...
Because it was the end of a committee meeting that runs right before city council, so people were coming in right when that presentation was starting.
Oh, okay.
And so, I think Mr. Riddick was here, Mr. Wim was here, and I think, Paul, you walked in at the end of it.
I was not here.
They, so there was a large majority of the council members who saw the presentation as it was going forward. And, you know, that, we're, our committee structure, Paul, is almost exactly modeled after how they do business in the General Assembly, that, you know, if somebody has a policy recommendation, it goes to, through a committee structure, and then it goes to the floor for a vote, and if it's voted up or voted down, then that's what happens.
I don't think we ever intended the committee to, I mean, the committees make recommendations to the entire council, the way I understand it.
Absolutely, but our...
And then the council has an opportunity in a, in a, in a formal...
And that has happened since I have been here.
To talk about it.
Every issue, every issue that has come before council, that has come out of a committee, whether it's bees, bunnies and birds, or chickens, you know, down the road, they all go through the committee and then a presentation comes before. In fact, we've even complained that we've seen these presentations sometimes two or three times. So nobody has jumped anybody and put together a resolution, you know, or put for their agenda to make something happen. We're following the procedures that we adopted.
Okay, well, this is, we can talk about that in some other points. Okay, I think we are where we are.
But going forward, because, you know, some of these committee, some of these issues you talk about that come out of committee, don't have opposition or don't have another, another side that they want to be heard. So normally, when that happens and it comes out that there's no one that's on the other side of the issue, it usually makes its way through the council structure right onto the, the formal agenda two weeks later. But in this particular case, even when we met and we were talking last week, that, you know, there was no one that, you know, around the table that had, well, I guess at that point, it was nobody in opposition. But I do think that, you know, a, a good lesson to, to be learned from this is that going forward, if there are issues or times where we have opposition to issues like that, I think that is important, like Andy so elegantly articulated, that, you know, we, we ought to, to hear the other side. I mean, just to be fair and balanced, at the end of the day, we're going to make the vote that we deem that's right for the citizens of this city. But I just think that at the end of the day, we should be open and balanced in terms of allowing both sides to be heard.
Okay. Just, you, how long does this go take?
This one's just an update, this is five minutes.
Okay.
Members of council, this presentation came through the Finance Administration Committee a couple of weeks ago, actually a month ago. You had heard at, from the manager in January, and also at the podium a couple of times at formal session, about a request for a policy on bullying, and the manager mentioned in January that we actually looked at our harassment policies and understood that we, that we could improve those. Well, simultaneous to that, we all had also begun a comprehensive review of all of the regulations and of the administration. So we wanted to bring your attention, so you understood how we were addressing that issue of bullying, and just give you a brief overview of that. Basically, what we're doing to address that issue is a, a package of policies surrounding the issue of harassment that basically set the proper conduct for employees to address that issue. Number one is a business conduct policy that establishes the importance of city values of accountability, integrity, innovation, and respect. We're establishing an anti-discrimination policy which expands upon our equal employment opportunity policy, an anti-harassment policy that expands on our current sexual harassment, which was our only existing policy that really dealt with harassment, anti-retaliation that would state the fact that it's illegal to fire, demote, harass, or otherwise retaliate against any employee that filed a charge of harassment or discrimination, or complained about harassment or discrimination, or if they participated in employee investigation. And lastly, that we have a firm stance of a zero tolerance for violence in the workplace. Additionally, we want to let you know that there are other, there are some 45 policies that we're currently updating and reviewing. These do not require the action of council for adoption of these, but we wanted to bring them to your attention so that all employees will know that, what these new policies are. We're also looking for continuity as they are established within each individual department's standard operating procedures. And then lastly, parallel to this, we have an effort for a omnibus ordinance, which will come to you this summer, which will update all the administrative codes. Many of our codes have not been updated as we've had operational changes over the past several years, and that will be coming to you in, in July for an update of those policies.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Marcus, why don't we break here and start right at seven up there? Is that okay? Okay. Okay.